I call to order the special session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, June 6, 2023 at 6:30 PM. Roll call.
Mayor Vettigotis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lynn?
Here.
Commissioner Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Here.
Commissioner Colianus?
Here.
Okay, this evening is a special session. There aren't any public comments on anything not on the agenda. We're going to focus on what's on the agenda. This is actually the very first meeting of this type where the residents approved a charter amendment to require a budget meeting at the very beginning of the process so they can weigh in on what the, what they believe the needs are. So we've got the agenda in front of us and I'm going to turn the meeting over to our city manager for introductory comments.
Thank you. As far as myself and the city staff, we are involved with budget from April through September. That's when we start. So we've already had the budget, working on it for two months. You'll see in a presentation, a very short one Ron's going to give what the process is and when everybody get involved in the process. And it's always the end of the process in September when there's two public hearings and those public hearings are required by law. They're statutorily mandated is where the public talks. The purpose of the charter item you see up on the board, the charter that was passed last year was to put a public hearing for the public to get input into the budget before the major part of the processes began. And eighty-eight percent of the twenty-seven hundred voters voted for this. So that's why we're having this meeting tonight and this meeting is mostly about you after these short presentations. The charter mandated this meeting, but we wanted to, we knew the flavor of this commission for more public involvement. So in addition to what the charter required, we've got an additional source of information that the public has already begun the process of talking about the budget. And this is using our connect Tarpon Springs that we've used for several things in the past. We'll be getting out, again, we, we got this out about two weeks ago. The commissioners on their diast have a sheet of the responses from the public. About thirty-five responses already, good responses. So the public has got to jump on tonight. And this will be up through our budget process of June, through when the commissioners are working with staff on July and August. This will be up for the next three months of the budget process. So you don't have to be at tonight's meeting. You didn't have the content. As you've got, you've got through the entire budget time to go on this website and comment about issues that the public wants the commission and staff to look at for the upcoming budget. As I said, there's the sites and we'll have those advertised on our Facebook page with the link. So it's real easy. You don't have to go through all those instructions. You can just hit the link on it. Also on there, you can get a copy of the entire budget draft as it stands now. So you can see where we are now. Again, we're in the beginning parts of the budget. So there's lots of things going to be added, moved around and stuff. But you can look at the actual budget as we has, as we have it now on that website. So those two things are available to have public participation throughout the whole process. And just to go over a little basics and stuff, I'll turn it over to Ron to, to continue with just some, some basics of the budget and what we're going to be looking at over the next series of months.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Ron Herring, Finance Director. I just want to say, like the city manager said, we have the budget on the city website under the documents and the document library. We call it the more detailed budget. It has all the line items. But we're also got the other ones ready, what we call the executive summary. It's all completed. It'll, should be on there tomorrow morning. A lot of good information on the summary, executive summary with four years of data, millage rates, history, debt, everything at CIP. So that, there'll be two budget documents out there. The one now and the one that's going to be there tomorrow. As the city manager was saying, back on March fourteenth, the, we had the referendum on the, referendum number two, which the city manager already explained, which passed by eighty-eight percent, which was, you know, conduct a public hearing, which is tonight at the beginning of each budget cycle, but no later than June thirtieth to, to obtain public input tonight. The other thing that was on, on the referendum was number three, referendum number three, what doing with a strategic plan to review and update every three years of fiscal strategic plan beginning for October first, two thousand twenty-three. Shall be implemented and utilized for creating city policy, budgeting, capital project planning consistent with its mission statement and core values. You know, both of these items, you know, interrelate with the budget process. Just a little overview of the strategic plan, the main areas are, you know, with the mission, the vision, the core values, the goals, which are the infrastructure, community engagement, quality of life, cultural heritage preservation, smart growth redevelopment and good governance. And then highlighted in the bottom is a goal F2, objective one, which is to utilize a strategic plan as a tool to prioritize budgeting annual and long-range capital expenditures. What we've been doing so far, really the budget process for us started in February with the, with the finance department getting ready in March. The departments keyed in their budgets and in May we're getting rid of, ready, getting the budget book put together. And here we are tonight. We have, all the funds have been balanced, general fund balance with no use of unassigned fund balance. That's basically the unrestricted reserves in the general fund. And Budget Advisory Committee is meeting with the departments on their budgets. They did one meeting last Thursday. They've got one this Thursday and one on June fifteenth, meeting with the departments. This, the budget timeline going forward, of course, tonight is a public hearing. We've got the budget workshops with the boards on July twelfth, July eighteenth, July twenty-seventh, and then August third if needed. And then September sixth is the first public hearing on a tentative millage rate and tentative budget. And then September twentieth is scheduled for the second and final public hearing on the millage rate and budget. And then October first, two thousand twenty-three is the beginning of the fiscal year for two thousand twenty-four. Just to show you where we are in the budget right now, I mean, it's going to change. This is the first go-around with the budget, but we have a budget so far in total of eighty million nine hundred, nine hundred eighty-five thousand, two hundred forty bucks.
Amazing.
The revenue is broken out by categories, taxes twenty-eight percent, permits and fees five percent, intergovernmental ten percent, charges for services forty-three percent, fines and forfeitures, interest one percent, miscellaneous one percent, then transfers, reserves, internal services for twelve percent. And then on the other side of the revenues, we got just a graph on the expenditures for the total city. General government thirteen percent, public safety twenty-six percent, physical environment thirty-seven percent, transportation four percent, economic environment one percent, cultural recreation ten percent, transfers four percent, and then non-operating debt, internal service fees five percent. And with that, that's my last slide. I guess we'll open it up to whatever questions or going into public comment. Okay. So what we're going to do now is, these were the staff presentations and we're going to go ahead and open it up to public comments. So if there's anyone here that wishes to provide their thoughts, observations, what they would like to see that the city focuses on, on this next upcoming year with regard to the budget, if you please step forward. You'll have four minutes. And if you wish to have an additional two minutes, if there's someone that's here that would give up their time, you can ask him. And I just need to have their name to do that. Good evening, Mr. Janeskus.
Good evening. Mark Janeskus, four eighty-seven Riverside Drive. And I'm here to make a comment about the parks and recreation. I see that the allocated budget is approximately eight million dollars of the total eighty million. And I would ask to make a request for consideration for pickleball. That's my hot topic because of the growing sport and what I think it'll enhance our green space that we already have. Also, not for selfish motivation, but also I think it could be if it's done right and planned right, it could be a revenue source for our city. So there's more of pickleball players. It's Tuesday night. They're at the rec center playing pickleball. They didn't want to give up that time to come and, you know, make their comments. They said, you do it. And so I'm here.
We actually planned it that way.
So that's my main objective here is to get that out so we can have some talk and discussion and planning on that and get the community involved in that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I, I, pickleball is a high priority. I mean, we've had discussions about that. It's just a matter of getting it done. And like you said, doing it right. So it integrates with everything else that we're, we're doing. So we don't put pickleball somewhere and then a year later, we realize that we should have just put it a little bit over this way or this way or a different location. So I don't know if you've got any new information that you want to share?
Just watch the agendas. Probably maybe in two or three meetings, we'll be put, we've, we're working right now to put together some different options. We've been work, we worked with another member of the audience on one option. There are other options we use. So we're hoping to bring back, it'll probably be one of the July meetings, you know, before we get, you know, before we get too far into things to look at some options and see if the commission can agree of some locations that would be favorable. And then obviously, when we know the location, we can put the cost behind it. We've already got some money budgeted. It depends on the location. If we'll need some others from this budget, which will still be available because we want to do this while we're still in the budget process, that decision can be made. So watch the July agendas. One of them, they'll, they'll probably be the item of some, of the different sites that we have is the possibility of pickleball. And we invite you for, you know, and your group to come and view and make your comments to us.
Wonderful, wonderful. The comment though, talking about being cost-effective, I understand that the Riverside tennis complex is going to be completely renovated in the next two to three months. And I ask about getting pickleball lined once that project's completed. I was told that that contract's already out the bid and not able to do so. A recommendation would be to do a addendum to the, back into the contract, maybe to line those courts for pickleball use. Very cost-effective. We're looking at maybe two hundred and fifty dollars per court, a thousand dollars to immediately get four pickleball courts for our community and then move on, you know, in twenty-four for development of a, you know, specific pickleball. So I just throw that out there too.
Yes. And I don't think the timing, like everything else, the timing is probably going to be behind on that. So we may have some time to do that. So, so we'll look at that.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Janeskus.
Good evening, Board. Anita Prodan, nine oh one Bay Shore Drive. There's a few things I want to see what you have in the budget this year, especially the pickleball courts. Everyone wants them. Please do it. Don't make them a deal. Pickle court, not having them. It's very important in this community to everybody health-wise. I'm here to speak on historic preservation. I'm looking at what you've got, culture and recreation. Please keep in your budget in mind. We must maintain the cultural buildings that we have in our community. Two years ago, our old city hall was terrible. We had to fight to get it taken care of and we had to fight to have it restoration done. Please do not forget the Safford House. And hopefully, we can eventually move it to the bayou. We have a great community here, not only the Greek culture here, but an old town. And we can have a beautiful, historical town that people are going this summer driving to see all the historic venues within the South and in the United States. We could have the greatest community here. Unbelievable what the plan could be with the historic avenues we have here in this community. We also have to maintain Craig Park inside with the trees, the shrubbery, the shuffleboard and our tennis courts, very important. And our trees there. We have to take care of those older trees. Thank you for the signs that the city did put up, but people are still swinging on the limbs and they're still climbing the trees. We need to have something done to make sure we preserve all of that. Our roads, our roads, you go down Canal Street, they're dipping again bad. The pipes are sinking down. Go out towards Florida Avenue, the skirts on the side of the road, the ruts, people are tearing up their tires. We need to maintain the roads in this community. We need to maintain good water lines and we need to take care of the sewer lines in this community. We see the damage that it's doing. Someone's not watching the roads and these areas and the potholes and the sewer entrances to this community. Take a ride around and see what's happening. But the main thing for me is historic preservation of this community and taking care of what we've got so we don't lose it. And probably, hopefully can buy lots to move old houses, historic houses that have history here in Tarpon Springs. That is our legacy and that's what we're here for. And I want to thank the Board, two weeks ago, for saving a house, changing the roof down in the fruit section. What the mayor said is right. We whittle away, we whittle away, and we lose everything we've got. And it's so important for Tarpon. And our library, we still, even though there's renovation going on, we still have to take care of our library. We still have to make sure that it's preserved because we've worked too hard to raise money and build the library and make it good for this community. These are things that are here all the time that must be taken care of. The new things that you want to put in the budget, see if we can support them for you. But mainly our historic preservation in Tarpon Springs. Buying property for parking lots downtown instead of a high-rise parking facility. There's some good lots on the trail that's walking distance to downtown Tarpon. We need to do a program like they do in other communities. They buy these lots, make parking lots. And the communities use the big golf carts to transport citizens back and forth who want to come to Tarpon Springs. We need to look at that. Yes, we do have the trolley, but it doesn't do what these other programs do. We have so much to do to make Tarpon such a magnificent place to come and visit. And I would like to see our commission look into these issues and do something to keep Tarpon alive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Maggie Miles, four thirty-three, Sporye Street. When I'm looking at the budget, I would like to see something regarding Juneteenth for next year. I know this year you said there'll be a proclamation, but I think we have enough time not to plan for next year. That Juneteenth could be a holiday for Pinellas County, I mean, for Tarpon Springs government. Also, looking at transportation, some work around the Belcher Distant Extension, opening that up, what can be done in the budget, what can be done to move that along if we need consultants or more studies or surveys, whatever we need. And then although I would like to see a pickleball, I want to know whatever happened to a pool coming to Tarpon. Tarpon's the only city that doesn't, Dunedin has a pool, Palm Harbor has a pool, Osmar has a pool, everybody has a pool except Tarpon Springs. We don't have a pool. So if our kids need swimming lessons, those that are not fortunate to have pools in their backyards, do they go to the beach or do they have to go to the Y in Palm Harbor or Trinity where they can get lessons there at a cost or sometimes free? So although, you know, I'm glad about the pickleball, you know, but we've been talking about a pool since, since I was small. And we still haven't gotten a pool in Tarpon. So those are my three things. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Miles.
Good afternoon, good evening. Katie Taylor, nineteen ninety-one Douglas Lane in Tarpon Springs. I wanted to say thank you for updating the street location at Lime and Distance. Thank you for moving the stop signs closer to the, to the street. It cut down on some of the hazard. But I was going to ask also now if you can put a flashing caution sign on Distance Avenue going north right at the crest of that hill because people that's coming off MLK going north on, on Distance Avenue, when they get to the corner of Lime and Distance, when you get over that crest of the hill, it's not enough time to stop if somebody pull out in front of you. So the people that's going north on Distance need to be told, slow down. I put a speed limit sign right there at the crest of the hill. But I thank you for at least putting the stop signs closer to the, to the street so that people can stop closer to see over that hill, traffic coming.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you.
We'll probably look at the flashing sign, the flashing light. The city manager is saying he'll take a look at that with the police department. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. David Ballard Geddis Jr. I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. With a proposed budget also comes a proposed tax burden. The budget is just another way of expressing a tax burden or a debt formulation to support a future increase in costs and subsequent taxes to maintain the budget. Quite frequently, debt formulations such as the national debt is used to pay a bond yield or dividends to support the interest rates to a bond. Such payout is recognized in statute two one eight point four one five, section sixteen F, as security to pay obligations to bonds. Such taxes are used as liquidity.
Point of order, Mayor. Don't these comments have to pertain to our budget?
I think he's saying that it does pertain to the budget. It's related to taxation. This evening is for the residents to express what they're, go ahead.
I, I do speak from a legislated level in, in some regards as it relates to city budgeting as well. Back to statute two one eight point four one five, section sixteen F. Such taxes are seen as liquidity to pay interest rates, both rated and unrated bond revenue, again, seen in that statute referenced on my, my envelope here. I ask, at what point, when does the civilian population due to clean across-the-board inflation coupled with the devaluing of the US dollar, adding in the everyday rising costs of our vital water supply, our necessary electric gasoline increases, factoring in the lack of adequate job opportunities to support the population? At what point does the civilian population financially collapse and can no longer bear the burden of everyday expenses as well as taxes that are being imposed against us? Another way of perceiving the budget is to view it as a public debt of such. At what point does legislation begin to tax us directly and directly tax us as enumerated from Article One, Section Two of the US Constitution and levy directly into the equity of our homes? Levying the equity out of our homes claimed as process due in the Fourteenth Amendment, again, thumbing us under chapter one fifty-nine of the Florida State Statutes. Federalist Paper Number Nine claims such legislative process as a factious process as contrived, as a malicious disorder within the inner workings of government. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Geddis. I, I think the point that Mr. Geddis is trying to make, tonight's a budget hearing for residents to express what they'd like to see, but also what things that they may wish to object to, such as taxation. And I think Mr. Geddis is making a point that he's objecting to the taxation. Some people may get up this evening and say that they want a lower millage rate. Mr. Geddis is simply objecting to taxation and when is all this going to stop and, and a continued increase in what our budget is every year? Thank.
As it relates to the, the pie chart, I, I do not see a, a bond yield or a, a bond, you know, slice of the pie, so to speak, in servicing bond debt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geddis. Next comment, please.
Good evening, Peter Delakis, five one four Ashland Avenue. Not being able to have seen the budget online, I can't really comment on specifics. There is a couple of things that I would like to follow up on what some of the other speakers have said. But first, specifically, as a budgetary item, it's time to raise the salaries for the Board of Commissioners. I'm going to put it out here now. Eight thousand dollars a year is not going to attract new talent. Nothing personal, but what it relies on is people who either are independently wealthy or have their own businesses or have some other income and can maybe contribute some of their spare time. So even if you raised it to a thousand a month for the commissioners, that's four thousand each one. And each one, and just to do the same for the mayor, four thousand times five is twenty thousand bucks. You're currently budgeted forty-five thousand for twenty thousand bucks extra is not going to kill you. Makes it a thousand bucks each. Mayor gets seventeen. We move on from there. On the pie chart here where it says economic environment, I'm not sure if that means economic development or economic development and the environment. But we need to see some sort of commitment to a revenue stream for us to acquire properties within the city. And I'm not specifically talking about the one everybody knows me about, but the Roosevelt thing, the Kokoras thing, any, and the Ross thing that we agreed upon. These are properties all around that we have potentials to acquire over a period of time, so we need to commit funds to that. Transportation. I'm sure some of y'all have felt the effect of MLK being partially closed. Thankfully, we have mirrors and we can go out and come around. But as the two ladies said, Distant, where is it? We had a meeting at Mount Moriah, what, about eight months, a year ago? We had the consultants, we did the public input, but we haven't seen nothing, what's happening since. We gave you ideas about three, there were three types. We gave you feedback, drained. Now, also, reason why I brought up MLK closed, you have to go to mirrors or maybe depending on where on 19 you have to go to, all the way up to Tarpon Avenue or Lemon Street or Lime, Lime. I believe the lady here mentioned Lime Street at a couple of meetings ago about opening it up. That, when I go north or east, I turn at Safford, go up Lime, there's a few stop signs, pass the post office, you're at Publix, very convenient thoroughfare, but that trail blocks it. And I have to say, Mayor, that was not proper to say that the resident had to contact the county to find out what to do about it. The board needs to come together and say, hey, this is a vital thoroughfare. Let's send a letter to the county, have staff look at it. What can we do to open it up? That's what a board does to respond to their citizens. So what I would like to reiterate is let's get on the move with Distant and also have the staff look into contacting the county about opening up Lime and Safford. Because actually, it would work good because you can put a stop sign there because MLK and Lemon, there ain't no stop signs. You got three on the south side of Safford. You got the Lincoln, you got Morgan. In fact, you could get rid of Morgan actually and create that one straight and just make the stop sign at Banana there. So, or no, that's Morgan on Safford. So those are two things in that regard. Ms. Samarcus said she would donate two additional minutes for me.
Okay.
Revenues. We look at what we have currently as revenues. You heard the gentleman speaking about pickleball. Mark, please, 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 you and Paul go and dig out those records for the sport complex. I drive by on mirrors, big piles of mulch and trees. That processing operation can be moved somewhere on the north side of the river. That's where your sports complex is. You put in the pool, you put in pickleball courts, you put in some fields. Ms. Fatilitis had come here before and I mentioned it at that time about lacrosse and other sports that we're getting into. Mr. Kouskoudas came one time, talked about softball and all these tournaments they go to. There's new revenue stream if you take advantage of it, and then you satisfy the needs of your residents. There are options. There are options. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kulianis? Yep? Okay. It's okay.
Good evening. Tom Kulianis, 1250 South Pinellas Avenue. Mr. Herring, let me, when is, how often does a city do a fee study or a increase of the fees based on the current costs? And I'm sorry if I.
That's okay.
Am I allowed to address?
I'm assuming you're directing the question to me and then Mr. Herring is listening to it, and we're good. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Herring.
Well, we do a revenue sufficiency study for the Water and Sewer Fund and we do for the Stormwater Fund.
Okay, well, I, I had 21 years of experience dealing with permit fees with the Environmental Protection Commission in Hillsborough County. And after a while, you'd be surprised how far behind you are on permit fees. And Hillsborough County, the commissioners were strong believers in that if you're going to benefit because you need a permit to build a development or a rezoning, the general taxpayer should not be paying for that.
We did have a, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay.
For the building permit fees, I think for the first time in a while, we did have an increase in our fees. I think it was about, went into effect, I don't know if it was quite a year ago. So we did have a study on that and which, which increased the fees.
And how about for planning and zoning and all those others?
Not, not one for those recently.
Okay. Well, I would recommend that as a revenue source.
Those are smaller revenues.
Because people are definitely benefiting from that service that we provide.
Right.
And it shouldn't be paid for by the general taxpayer, in my opinion.
Right.
Secondly, I understand, just from seeing, I didn't see the budget online, but there is a definite increase in additional revenue because of assessments, assessed values going up.
Right. There's a tax value assessment, yes.
Okay, we also dealt with that, and we learned a hard lesson that when you take money that's gifted to you like that and you use it for recurring expenses like hiring personnel, when the hard times come, you've got to wind up getting rid of those people and more. So when you, when you're gifted with sometimes one-time money, you use it for things like a Kokoras Park, one-time expenses, not recurring expenses. And another thing, going off of Mr. Delakis offering you guys a raise, I think it would be nice if you gave pensions to former mayors. And one other serious issue is, I don't know how many positions Mr. Young has open in the police department, but I would urge you to fill his vacant positions because you can have all the beautiful historic buildings you want, but unless we have a better quality of life from the law enforcement side, that doesn't do you much good. And I'm talking about like mirrors, the stop signs and those things. And I just urge you to give him the positions he needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kulianis. Just so everybody's information, our rules of procedure states that comments made by residents should be directed to the commission and questions would be directed to me. Tonight's a special session. We, on a format like we're having tonight, it's really should be a work session, but our rules don't allow resident comment during work sessions, so there's a little bit of liberty being taken here. I've known Mr. Kulianis for a very long time. He's a former mayor, and so I understood what he was trying to get at. So I just wanted to make sure I understand what the rules are, but in this particular evening, I'm just making it a little easier for people. So are there any other public comments? Good evening, Ms. McKinney.
Hi, Debbie McKinney, 1021 Rose Tree Lane. I just, I don't, I know my own family budget. I don't know anything about city budgets, but doing my own budget, I always protect what's most important to me. And so right now, what's important to me is to make sure that the schools continue to get their SROs and the extra police officers while they're starting up school, while the crazy parents are dropping off and keeping peace at the schools. And also what's dear to me is how much I'm paying taxes. We've all been hit with really high insurance, flood insurance, homeowners insurance, everything has gone up, car insurance. Duke Energy screwed a lot of us with their budget plan, and my bill went from two ninety-six to five something. And so what's important to me is, yes, I want to take care of everything that we can, but to try to not to burden us with more.
Thank you, Ms. McKinney. A couple of people mentioned the police department tonight, public safety in October, September 30th ends the three-year contract that we have in place right now. New contract will be proposed as part of this budget process beginning October 1st. That includes the SROs and, and also the comments made by Mr. Kulianis concerning the police department. I know the commission's very sensitive to making sure that we've got an excellent, which we already have, and keeping it that way, an outstanding police department. So are there any other public comments?
Hi, Elias Garnika Uscatagi, 1482 Hillview Lane. We heard about needing to increase the commissioner salaries, which I definitely agree. It's a huge barrier to entry, the time commitment involved with how little the payout is. It's just a matter of practicality and understanding that people need to pay their bills. I, I'd like to extend that and go, also, we need more paid staff for the Train Depot, the Heritage Museum, and the Safford House. It shouldn't be so dependent on volunteer efforts. Historical preservation is skilled work, and we should be excited in wanting to hire people who are trained in this kind of stuff in order to, you know, manage your archives and manage your buildings. If you think about it, like when Mayor Safford lived in that house, how many people were tasked managing the estate, just managing the house? If they paid people then presumably to take care of the building, we should probably have at least a few people taking care of it and the grounds around it, not as, just as like their role, where it can be like this is a caretaker of the building. And it's the same thing with the depot. There have been like some part-time, like the best wage you can get at the Train Depot is a part-time job, and it really shouldn't be like that. It's one of our like most intact historical resources in terms of its context and like the inside. It would be great if we could, you know, sell copies of our old maps or recreations of historical objects, but instead we have a museum that's run by volunteers that sometimes don't know the area, aren't connected, don't know the history because they're not, why should they be? It's, it's difficult work, and if we're going to really care about our, the enduring cultural legacy and history of the town, we need to make sure that we have the skills and resources to back that up instead of relying on the idea that people will continue to do it for free in perpetuity. Things are only going to get harder as time goes on in terms of historical preservation because that's just how information dissipates. And we should be like having someone to manage interns, you know, from the universities to be doing work at our buildings. That's the kind of thing we should be looking towards, at least I think. I just really would appreciate if there were more pay, like there was more wages dedicated to this kind of thing so that people are incentivized to stay or invest in their community in that kind of historical knowledge. Because it's one thing to give it from one person to another. It's another thing to give it to everyone who comes to Tarpon Springs, and that level of communication isn't something that comes naturally. People go to school for this kind of thing. People get like master's degrees, and those people can't use that education for free. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Miles. Are there other public comments? Hi, Ms. Miles, you can't, not, I, I've got to draw the line somewhere this evening, but thank you. Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments? Let me, hang on. Unless the commission wishes to waive the rules and allow Ms. Miles to come forward again, I don't have any objection to that. The rules are the rules.
I don't have an objection to that.
Leave it as it is. Okay.
I'm sorry.
It's okay for Ms. Miles to come forward. Please come forward, Ms. Miles.
433 East Boyer Street. I'm sorry. I have a dear friend, Greek lady named Mary, that I give a ride to often, and I gave her a ride today to Publix, and she was quite upset because they had just went up on her rent for a hundred dollars. And she lives in the senior apartments off MLK. And I know this is a, like a county-wide problem. If it's not a housing authority, even though it says low-income housing or affordable housing, they're raising the rent. And these people only get a certain amount of money, and I'm not sure what this commission can do, whether they can take this conversation up to county government, but she was pretty upset today, which upset me because she said they just went up on her rent for a hundred dollars, and she was going to have to try to get help from her daughter to start helping pay her rent. So if it's a housing authority, I think it's strictly based on your income and it stays at a manageable level. But this new affordable housing that we're seeing now, they're going up on the rent, and we're seeing some of the results in our homeless people that we're seeing in the area. And I'm quite sure Chief Young is seeing an increase in homelessness around here. And so I told her I would bring it up tonight, and I forgot. And so, Mary, I, I said what I was going to say to the commission.
Thank you, Ms. Miles. I knew I was going to open the door. Is there any objection for Mr. Delakis to get back up? He's already spoken six minutes, so.
He gets 30 seconds.
I'll, I'll be quick. There's 40 lots for sale between Distant and the new renovated Mango Circle. So that's, that's something to be looked at. And talking about historical things, I think it's time we honor Annie Dabs and follow through on her vision to create a museum on that city, that property the city foreclosed on Oakwood, what is it, Oakwood and Levis or Oakwood and Distant? She's got a treasure trove of historical stuff. Her daughter would be willing to donate. So put that on your capital improvement project list. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delakis.
Anita Proz, 901 Bayshore Drive. Former Commissioner Delakis keeps talking about the property off of Martin Luther King. Maybe the city manager can elaborate on this. When I first became a commissioner and Charlie Barnes was city manager, we had thought of putting a recreation unit there, but when the ground was tested, we were told no because of the gases coming up through the earth because there evidently, I don't know, it may be in the records of the city, there were drums buried there and other material buried there. So if you ever choose to do something there, be sure environmentally you have that ground tested because they said we couldn't build there because the children would get cancer, and that bothers me. And I think our mayor, being an engineer, he may know something about it, too. So that's very important to take into consideration on that property. That's why they put the, the city refuge there that they collected because they knew at that time they couldn't build anything on that property. So please, the new commissioners that haven't lived here that long, don't know about it, but you got to look into it.
Thank you. Okay, let me go to remote access comments. Mr. Jumper, are there any, anybody wishing to make a comment by Zoom or telephone?
Online, would like to comment, please raise your hand. We will unmute the next Zoom attendee. Zoom attendee, you are unmuted. Please state your name and. Zoom attendee, you are unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Dawn Arbottello. I live at thirteen sixty-six Cottage Grove Road. I have been listening to all of the comments and I agree wholeheartedly that we have an amazing city with a terrific cultural history and the importance of maintaining that and developing that is there. But I did want to read something very quickly about the importance of defining a city identity, which, as it pertains to the budget, would probably entail putting together a committee or a group to kind of put all this information together. And I have more detailed information, but I just wanted to read this paragraph real quick. In an increasingly urban and economically integrated world, people and ideas move rapidly from location to location. City regions therefore should understand and communicate the core identity that lies behind their appeal. Along the way, they can recruit their residents and other stakeholders to be active champions and better leverage marketing resources. Cities that convey distinctive and differentiating character based on a coherent, genuine identity are more competitive and gain new opportunities once the world knows their story. I think we have a fantastic story and if we were able to commission a group to create this cohesive identity for the city and incorporate that into the plans and everything that goes on in this city, we could really increase the appeal of all of our good works that we're talking about, pickleballs and sports things and, you know, the traffic and everything that we do to improve this community as well as promoting the wonderful culture. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Will Cox, is there anyone else?
We do not have any more raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs, we have one email.
We do. This email is from Tina Bukavales, one fifteen Athens Street. The Greek Town Preservation and Heritage Association applauds the city for funding the Greek Town Preservation and Placemaking Consultants' fiscal year. The consultant's team insights and recommendations combined with valuable input from the public will lay a strong foundation for the future of the Greek Town Historic District. We now request your support in implementing enhancements targeted by the consultant. They will be crucial for preserving district historic and culture character, improving usability for residents and visitors, and creating more vibrant spaces that promote economic growth and local pride. To bring them to fruition, we request that the BOC allocate funding in the next fiscal year. Official recommendations will be available in the fall, but may include historically appropriate facade renovations along Dothekenees Boulevard, public space enhancements such as events, usage of Kakkoros Park, landscaping, et cetera, emphasizing culture and history, elimination of sponge docks, assertions that limit spongers' work area, improved walkability along south sidewalk on Dothekenees, creating a brick-paved pedestrian zone on Dothekenees during part of the day via retractable ballards and retractable ballers. We are committed to working closely with the city throughout the implementation process. Our expertise and deep connection to the district combined with consultant's findings will ensure the enhancements align with preservation, best practices, and meet the needs of our community.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. I'm gonna close the public comments now and go to commission comments. I'm gonna ask whether any of the commissioners have any comments. Anyone wish to start? Go ahead. Is this on the budget? This is on the budget, right?
No, I was gonna talk about the Constitution. No, I'll talk about the budget. No offense, Mr. Gettys. We gotta do the, you know, the six degrees of Kevin Bacon. They gotta somehow loop back, you know. You know, the budget of any organization is, defines their values. And you find, you can tell a organization's values by what they include in their budget. And I think all the things that were brought up tonight, whether it's pickleball or historic preservation, parking lots, Juneteenth for sure for twenty twenty-four, and public pools, all those things are part of our values. You know, we're, we are, we still have to deal with a balance. You know, we're not the federal government. We can't write checks to just cover what we wanna spend. So, you know, we have to make those hard decisions, but I was happy with the items that were brought up tonight. I believe they express the values of our, of our town. And the only thing that I do oppose is raising commissioner salaries as some form of motivation to serve. I, first of all, you, you couldn't raise them high enough to give us minimum wage. So, so given that you can't raise them high enough to, to cover any reasonable amount for the time we, we put in, and, and I'm not trying to be a martyr. I just, it's just what it is. And I think that we don't wanna motivate people by money. I think we should motivate them for public service, which I think is the highest calling. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coolianis, Commissioner Coolianis, excuse me. Ms. Jacobs, we're gonna go back to read one more email into the record.
I do. I apologize. I didn't see that there was another one sitting here on the dais. This one was from Terry Malench, thirteen fifty-four Shady Pine Way, apartment E one. There is a complete lack of public outdoor pickleball courts in Tarpon Springs. Players must travel to nearby cities to play on actual outdoor pickleball courts. There is an enormous amount of public information available regarding the popularity and high growth of pickleball all around the country. We need outdoor pickleball courts in Tarpon Springs so that our residents can enjoy the sport right here in our city. With players traveling to nearby cities to play, likely those cities are benefiting from money out our city. Residents spend while there gas for car, pick up drinks for hydration, lunch after pickleball, money that could be spent in Tarpon Springs. Thank you, Terry Malench, if I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Thank you. Let's go back to commissioner comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to respond to some, first, let me thank everybody for their comments. I, I'd love to help and handle all of them. I just don't wanna extend and add to the millage rate. I heard what Ms. McKinney had to say. Some of us are better off than others, but we're all feeling the pinch of inflation. It's across the whole country. There's not much we can do with that. So we kinda have to just take it. We all know eggs are up, gas is up, everything is up, electricity. I wanted to ask Ron if you wouldn't mind, ballpark, I'm not looking for exact numbers, how much of this eighty million dollars is discretionary for spending other than like salaries? And you know that, because we have a set amount that we have. Do you have that number by any chance?
No, I really don't have that number offhand. You know, you're talking personnel, then operating expenses and capital and...
Because we're not really talking about that much discretionary money. For the amount of items, you know, that we get to listen to, I've been at a meeting where, with a, with a group of politicians and everybody, the question was, which, which city has expendable money? And nobody raised their hand. So we're all up here doing a juggling act of trying to help what's most important and what most people want and what's feasible to be done because we also have to be prepared for the unknown, which is that H-word that comes in and around this time of year. So I, I did wanna, I don't know if you had that at all?
Well, I can give you the different categories of what makes up the expenditure budget, like thirty-three million of the total eighty million. Thirty-three point six million is personnel services, twenty-six million is operating expenses, fourteen point three million capital, debt two point six million, some grants and aids, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, transfers two point seven million, and then some internal service, reserves for internal service funds are one point two million. Now, I don't know if you're also talking about, you know, we do, you know, some of the funds have unassigned unrestricted money in those funds, but we, you know, we try to keep those and not, not invade those monies, but.
But most of our money is spoken for.
In the budget, yes.
And that, that's the point I'm trying to, I was trying to make. Thank you. The other thing is, I think we're all, and I don't wanna speak for anyone else, but I think we've heard enough on pickleball that we do all want it. It's just the, the place to put it. So that's a big thing. I know I heard potholes and wear marks. All those seem to be done on curves around, and I believe it's coming from boat trailers. The boat trailers cannot stay in those lanes. They're, a lot of the lanes are tight and they go off the road and they make those ruts. But as of lately, I, I've seen a number of areas where we've filled in and I was pretty pleased with that. So I know somebody spoke on moving the Saford House. When you're fighting a budget like this, I am not in agreement to moving it. I think it's in a good location. I, I know it could be in a better location for, for people to see it, but it is, it's not hidden and I think it's safe. I, I don't know if that's just the wisest spendage of money. And what, what I have more fear of is how it gets put back together. So I don't know about that. I am for Juneteenth. I, I would like to see something done with that, a pool, you know, I don't know. That's, that's a constant maintenance. I don't wanna really raise commission salaries per se as well, but what I would like to do is make sure that anybody that runs for commission should be an owner of a property that pays taxes in town. So that's, that's my thinking. I did bring up to the city manager about possibly revisiting, charging outsiders to use our Splash Park or our Sunset Beach and, you know, keeping it free for Tarpon residents, but it gets used and abused and we have to pay to keep it clean for outsiders. And they, you know, there should be a charge, as well as I don't think there should be a charge for us to use Fred Howard Park. So these are the things that I would like to see. And with that, I'll hand the mic back.
This side.
Yeah, I'll go first. We're just responding to some of the, well, first I wanna ask Ron. Ron, this is really like the first year we've had the, the grant specialist writer. Is there some expected numbers that, from grant opportunities this year or this past year that could reflect on the proposed budget?
Well, I know she's working on it, but I don't think I have any final numbers I can give to you, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
I know she's hard work.
We're very optimistic. It's just how much she's gonna get. She's gonna get a lot of grants. And again, that grant money puts money back in to use towards something else. We don't know the number, but in this year and next year, I think you're gonna see her bringing a lot and giving you the option of money back to place in other places where we might not be able to fund at the beginning of the budget, but during the course in getting those and freeing that money, obviously, you know, it can be anytime during the budget year. It can be January or anything. We've got a grant. We've got eighty thousand unobligated from the budget. What didn't we fund in this budget? The commission priority to put that towards. And I think from, from watching her so far, I think there's gonna be a lot of those opportunities in your next upcoming two years as commissioners to be able to utilize. I'm very optimistic from her work so far.
That's awesome. I think, you know, we can have budget resolutions as they come about to see where we can shift the money around. So I'm looking forward to that. As we mentioned, the pickleball courts, they're coming. I, I spoke with the city manager recently. There, there's a couple new locations that, that are gonna come up and should be plenty of space to be. Another issue is, you don't want just two pickleball courts in one spot. We're trying to find something where it could be three or four. That way you can have those tournament-sized events that, you know, are very popular among the pickleball community. I'm all for historic preservation. Ms. Miles brought up Juneteenth. I have no problem looking into it, supporting it. The Belcher-Diston extension, I've gone on the record, I, I've opposed it before. There's a, there's a big minority community I am concerned about, especially where the Cops and Kids Center is currently at and the amount of influx traffic that'll go through the neighborhood. But I'm looking to see how the Cops and Kids Center does come along and see what it's gonna look like to help pull away some of those kids from that main thoroughfare if ever opened up in the future. But right now, I, I have my reasons to not support it. And until I, I see some more people from the community on both sides wanna support it, I'd be then willing to consider it. As far as a pool, I mean, the pool's been talked about for many years. And I understand that, you know, an Olympic pool is, it costs a lot of money to maintain each year, but I would really like to see something, even a little one, something little, possibly at the Cops and Kids Center for the kids to enjoy during the summertime and be able to swim. Because I, I've seen a couple pools in other cities and they're not Olympic pools, but just something big enough to get those kids in, in those hot summer months to cool off and enjoy themselves. As, as some things were talked about for commissioner salaries, you know, I could support it, but I can't support it while I'm in office. For me to vote on something like that and then reap the benefits of it, I just couldn't do it. And to tell you the truth, it's, it ain't just the eight thousand dollars we get a year. You know, I, I personally came on the health insurance and it, it's benefited me tremendously. So for me to, you know, sit there and act like it's just the eight thousand dollars you receive every year, it's not. There's a little bit more to it that really doesn't go into a discussion. And as one of the other commissioners said, it is a, a calling. And if you love town enough, you'll find a way to get involved. So, but Ms. Elias, you did bring up some good points and I'd like to see some, if I can't remember right, some of those buildings aren't open on the weekends, the cultural centers and, and, you know, and maybe if we could shift some of those days or Monday, Tuesday, they're closed, or at least have them open during the weekends during the tourism season. It'd be nice because I, I do see a lot of, you know, foot traffic around those areas. And I just want people to learn so much about our town as much as possible. And I'm gonna bring up some other things that, you know, I've talked with people in the community. You guys are well aware that I've supported them. And this may fall back to some, working with some organizations like the merchants, like the Chamber, or, you know, having some city-funded events. I really wanna see the carnival or fair be brought back to this community once a year. I, I know there was some issues in the past, but it's, it's all about community involvement and support and giving these young families an opportunity to have their kids in an environment that's in a, a good area. So I'd really like to see that come back to town, whether it be in the downtown or the sponge docks. I, I'd like for our city to start looking at a liquor license for the golf course. There's a, a good opportunity there. The golf course brings a lot of, a lot of people in and it's, it's expensive to, to go play around and golf. And if you're golfing and there's some drinks there, you're probably gonna pay twice as much as what you did for the golf course on drinks. So that's something I'd like to consider, at least this board. And do I see it happening this year? Not sure, but at, at some point, we need to consider a, a new golf clubhouse that's, you know, includes a restaurant, bar, pub, or even, and a, a space or a venue so people could rent, like some of these rotary clubs. There's gotta be a nice place in town to possibly run in the future. I know that's a big budget item. So do I see it happening now? No, but I just wanna throw it out there and reach the true potential of our golf course. Beer and wine sales at the, you know, all the Tarpon Springs public art events and shows. I wanna enhance that environment a little bit with some beer and wine sales for the, for the people that come watch these plays and, and events. I think it'd be a nice enhancement to the experience. And try to improve and add sidewalk crossings at, at more intersections. We, we see that the residents have gotten, have been vocal and we've seen certain intersections in neighborhoods been completed because of it. And it's not us. We didn't do it. It's simply the residents reaching out to our city staffs, to the city manager, our police department doing their work and coming back and getting it done. So there are some intersections that we had no control of that the residents have actually helped push to get done. And that's, a, a lot of that stuff is in the, the maintenance portion of our budget in which it can happen. Oh, we gotta do something to help the building department, possibly open up another position or adding someone else to there. We've seen at times there, there's been a delay in the permit process for our building department. in the permit process for our building department, and we need to try to help them out as much as we can. Um, that, that would help with economic development and, uh, business opportunity in the downtown and, and the Sponge Docks, and just all around town. And, uh, if we can help them out in any way possible, I would really like to do something for that, for that department. And, uh, I've been a, a pet peeve about this one. I'd like to see a little bit more of a Christmas display around Craig Park, maybe some, some more icicle lights or something. I just think we have, uh, a great opportunity for our community to be a regional attraction in the Tampa Bay area during, um, the Christmas season. And I'd like to see a little bit more to the, the Craig Park area if possible. And, uh, the Cops and Kids Supercenter, I wanna, as we start budgeting, as the grant specialist starts working on it, I wanna see what that's gonna look like. Hopefully, we can maybe have some designs for a small pool in there too, so. And we do wanna restore our, our shuffleboards and paint them and make them look sharp. That, we do wanna restore our, our shuffleboards and paint them and make them look sharp. The city staff's done a great job to help improve the drainage in that area. And, uh, you know, i- if they're gonna stay there, we need to enhance them and remind people of the historical spec- uh, perspective of it. Uh, I've also talked with the city manager, and this is, I don't know how this could go. This would have to be a discussion for the board. Uh, more transient boat slips in the Sponge Docks. We are a hotel on the water. Uh, I've seen it personally. I've seen, and, uh, we're part of this six-hundred-mile, boat venture, you know, all around the, you know, all around the southeast, and, uh, we're one of the main hotspots, so, uh, I believe there could be some properties in which we could try to in- increase transient boat slips and have that hotel-on-the-water experience. A, a lot of people, uh, tourists come to town that we don't even see or talk to, and staff does a great job in welcoming them all. Hopefully, at some point in the future, we could talk about like a trolley, a golf cart service to and from the downtown and Sponge Docks. Um, you know, the, a lot of these things are, are big budget items. I'm not gonna say they're not, but if you don't throw them out there at this time of the year, at, at some point, you know, you, you hopefully you can get a, a couple of them each year and go from there. And, um, I'd also be willing to, we need somewhat of a nightlife, and I'm not talking, you know, a crazy nightlife, but I, I've also wanted to consider in certain areas, possibly putting the noise ordinance, uh, pushing it back to midnight i- i- in some of the busier parts of towns for something to consider, so. Those are just a, a couple thoughts and, and part of the process, and, uh, I wanna thank all the residents for their comments tonight, and, um, hopefully we can work on accomplishing most of the goals. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lawrence.
Yeah. First of all, I wanna thank the people that showed up tonight and, uh, gave us a viewpoint on the budget. And as well, the people that contribute to the Connect Tarpon, uh, portion of this. Uh, this is a first for the city. This is the first time we've reached out to the public, to our residents, and asked them what they wanted in this city. Prior to us kind of going through the whole budget process and saying, here it is. So, this is a, this is a good policy step we made. I'm glad it made it past, um, the vote into the charter. I'm not gonna go through a litany of what I see happening with the budget so far. I came here to listen to you, uh, not so much have you listened to me. Pretty much everybody knows that I'm a, uh, maintain what you have, improve what you have type of person. So, along those lines, that's always been my focus. That'll continue to be my focus. As far as some of the other major things we talked about, like sports fields and buying properties and getting more green space for parks and so forth, that's something I think will come up during the process. We are not a very resident or per-resident, uh, in debt type of, of, type of a city. There's other cities with much more debt per resident than we have. We haven't taken a lot of bond infrastructure. We might have a discussion later on this year about how to do some of the bigger things, uh, through bonds. I don't know. That's, we're gonna have to see how that develops, but anyway. So, it's the only way that we can approach doing big things. With our current budget and the way it's growing and how we're growing, and the infrastructure needs of the city as a basic whole, um, improving roads, improving the, the water pipes, improving the sewage, especially the stormwater, et cetera, et cetera. We have a lot of plain maintenance and making life livable, um, issues that the city needs to address from my perspective, so. Anyway, I wanna thank you all for your input. Um, hopefully, we can do this more often, but thank you.
Similarly to Vice Mayor Lawrence, uh, you know, my, uh, personal thoughts as far as what I'd like to see will come later during the budget process, but honestly, that's gonna be very little. And also, I, uh, wanna mention with Commissioner Koulianis that I agree with him concerning the, um, uh, commissioner salaries. I think everybody felt kind of the same way, maybe, um, just the sentiments across the board. I, I, I'm certainly for, I can tell you one thing, it'd take a lot more money to make my wife happy with the amount of time I spend here, so I'm not even gonna go there with that. I, um, I became, I, I wanted to be mayor because I wanted to, um, kind of, in my opinion, put the city back on track, uh, with regard to what the residents want, rather than what individual commissioners are looking for. We're here to serve you. That's the purpose of this meeting tonight. That's the purpose of, uh, the charter change. And the, the message here is eighty-eight percent of the vote approved this charter amendment. They wanted to have, residents wanted to have a say upfront. And, um, as I mentioned to the city manager today, I was absolutely thrilled with the comments that we received online. Not so much the number, but when you look at them, they're all consistent with, with the strategic plan, what the priorities are in that strategic plan. So, we're listening, and residents are sharing their, their messages with us, and it's, you know, the, the good thing is, it's all consistent, um, with what the strategic plan says. And, and, um, when I wanted to be mayor, the one thing that I felt was lacking was a process that we would go through that would be sensitive to the residents' needs, to try and take a little bit of the, um, um, what I refer to as hobby shopping off the table with, you know, little personal projects and things like that, and focus on what the needs of the city are based on what the residents feel that the needs are. And, um, that was why we established this, this strategic plan. We've got the comp plan. The comprehensive plan tells us what the sh- uh, deficiencies are in the city, such as pickleball courts. We don't have any, um, mini-parks. We're still deficient in those, and, and the mini-park deficiency allows us to purchase property like Coquart Park. Uh, but it doesn't prioritize those. Uh, the strategic plan actually goes through and prioritizes those, and, um, and, and, and tells us what is important in terms of what the residents feel are important. And I think everything that's said tonight is, is great. It's not even an issue, but it, it has to be prioritized, 'cause there isn't enough money, time, or money, um, and some of it may not even pass the muster from a s- public safety perspective. And so, there's a whole lot of variables here that would have to be looked at. We have, um, i- i- the, the budget this year, uh, it, which, uh, as Mr. Herring showed you, is eighty million dollars. That's, I'm not happy with that, um, not happy with that at all. Uh, when I became commissioner, um, in twenty twenty, I think it was sixty-five million dollars. That's what the budget was, right around sixty-five million dollars. That was, what, three, four years ago? Four years ago. Now it's eighty million dollars. And I can assure you, Mr. Herring's already figured out a way, and it's not because he's finding a way to spend the money. He still has to balance the budgets. There are still shortages. And I think, um, Vice Mayor Lawrence alluded to the fact that, um, we're not a type of community that would go into debt. I think he's correct about that. There are some larger projects that we simply don't have enough money in a one- or two-year period to be able to do. And Commissioner Koulianis is working with the, um, finance department to kind of come up with a, some kind of a game plan about how do we do these larger projects, given the amount of money that we have available. And, um, at some point, if, if you could meet with the city manager, maybe schedule, uh, an agenda item to kind of go over how you're progressing in that, that would be very helpful, whether it's during the budget process or whether, um, it's a separate reg- during the regular session. That, I think many people would like to.
It's gonna be the first, first meeting in July. We'll be bringing that, we'll be coming forward to you.
All right. That's good. Uh, that, that's a regular session?
Yes.
Okay. Also, as far as the millage, I know Mr. Geddes is very big on taxes and, and, um, the, from a millage perspective, um, I looked at this last year, and I just wanna, that, nothing has changed. We're still the lowest millage rate in the county for full-service communities. Dunedin, Safety Harbor, Osmar has a lower millage rate, but they don't have a police department. Uh, we do, and, um, that decision was made a long time ago, and I'm, I'm very happy with that decision, and very proud of our police department. That's a part of Tarpon Springs. We're, in my opinion, one of the few, if not the only, community that's independent, makes its own water, its own police department, its own fire department, has its own hospital, has its own four-year college. The list goes on and on and on, so we'd be, we should be very, very thankful for what we've got, in that regard. A number of people have, um, talked about extending the hours or maybe finding ways of, um, of, um, allowing our facilities, such as the cultural center, the, the Safford House, also the Historical Society to open with longer hours. And that's very consistent with, um, our, our departure from needs-based economic development, which is, uh, building, bringing in more, uh, development, more people would move into town. That's very consistent with a town that has room to expand. We don't have that. We're, we're ninety percent built out, and we're transitioning, we're not one-hundred percent there yet, but we're transitioning to asset-based, where we're gonna be relying on more visitors from outside of town to bring their money to town, spend it, and then at the end of the day, or in, in, after a couple of days, they would go back home. And those types of towns like ourselves that are built out, they're very historical, cultural, um, have got a lot to offer in that regard, and places to visit have been very, very successful. Uh, Newport, Rhode Island, Monterey, California. I mean, there's just, the list goes, Salem, Massachusetts, the, the list goes on. So, eventually, in the future, we will be one of those towns, and, and, um, we do have a lot of history here and a lot of culture and a lot of diversity that people just enjoy, and, and quite frankly, we're just a regular, good old hometown. I was looking at, um, a Women's Day magazine article. I thought it was a recent one, but from twenty eighteen. And basically, it said towns that time has forgotten. And there were twenty, I, I didn't know. I said, let me just go through there. And it was listing those towns that I just mentioned, but out of the twenty towns, it included Tarpon Springs. I was shocked. I didn't even know about that article. And so, when I saw that, I said, wow. And, and, um, I can't begin to tell you how many small towns there are like ours in, 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 uh, in the United States, but to have it highlighted by Women's Day Magazine, which is not some small magazine, as, as a place that i- is just an exceptional place to visit. We should be, again, also very thankful, um, that we have that, and we should preserve what we have, and I think that's what the residents have said with the strategic plan. I think the, um, the things that were mentioned this evening from the residents are certainly, um, achievable. Um, I'm not gonna go over the pickleball courts. Again, you've heard enough about that this evening. Um, the facilities, uh, the one thing about Craig Park, I've mentioned this in the back in, in the past, we really do need to have a master plan for Craig Park. Um, I, I had a visit by, um, uh, a, a family that came in, and, and, uh, the, the lady, the wife was, um, a descendant of Dr. Belcher, and there was a tree in, in Craig Park that was, uh, um, planted in memory of Dr. Belcher. They couldn't find that tree, and I, I, I'm not sure where that tree would be, but, uh, they kind of described the area, and I know we lost some trees in the past because of the storm. But if we had a master plan to be able to identify these things, um, and identify their importance to the community, I, I think that would be very helpful in the future. The Juneteenth, um, uh, we're definitely gonna have the proclamation. I think as far as the, um, the holiday goes and the closing of City Hall, that's something that the, um, the commission's gonna have to discuss and, and the city manager's gonna have to discuss as well. There's some things that were said, uh, but publicly about that in the past. The pool has a, a long history, and, um, I am just not really sure where we are on that and, and in terms of what the priority would be. The, um, Land Preservation Fund that we do have, um, I think you were mentioning, Mr. Delakis was mentioning a, a funding source for that. We should probably give that some thought. As far as, uh, we do have some money that goes into that already, but it is certainly, it's not enough, and, um, and I, I do know that we, we spent some of that on the, um, on the, on the property on Florida Avenue. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, we are putting money away, but also spending it in, in preservation as well. So, that, I'm sure my comments are not helpful in terms of anything specific, but the point tonight was to get your input and, um, not necessarily give you a decision tonight, but hopefully, as, as the summer progresses and the budget evolves, um, you'll be able to monitor how things are going, and, and you know who we are. I hope we still have our business cards out in the lobby that you can pick those up. It's got our telephone numbers on it, and feel free, whether you're here this evening or out, uh, watching on television, give us a call. If there's something of specific interest to you, give us a call and ask us how it's going in terms of the budget. And certainly, if we don't, um, if none of the commission has an answer for you, certainly, um, we can get that answer for you, and to have somebody contact you on that if it, if, if that's the appropriate way to go about it. That's all I have. Um, does anyone, let me make sure I've got. Yeah, uh, there, as I said, there's a number of projects that were kind of, um, they're gonna eat up some money, and, and the Gross Avenue, Seabreeze, Bayshore Sewer. As time goes on, and we haven't done those, those are costing us more money. East Thorn Street, uh, between, uh, Alternate Nineteen and, and Ring Avenue. So, there's a number of things we'll be addressing, uh, this, this summer in terms of the budget that weren't even discussed tonight, but the purpose tonight was to hear from you. So, I don't know if, um, if there's anything else from last call on the commission? Okay. That's all I have, and I'm gonna assume, do, do you have anything else, uh, staff? Chief Young, city manager, of course, you wanna close this out, or?
I just wanna encourage everybody, again, the Connect Tarpon site will be open for your budget ideas. Keep submitting them. This is a good start, but, uh, continue during June. Again, as you see in July, the, it'll be the staff and the commission talking about the budget, so it'd be good to have all your thoughts in during June, but continue in July also. It's gonna be open. Use it. Uh, it's very impressive, the start we had from the citizens being involved. Um, so, continue that. We'll be monitoring it. We'll be getting it to the commission. We'll be updating them on all your ideas you add to it. So, please continue that and continue the process of input to us so we can put together the best budget possible for you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jacobs, do you have anything?
I promise, thank you.
I wanna thank everybody for being here, and anybody that's watching on television. I thank you for watching, taking the time to watch this as well. Meeting adjourned at seven fifty-five.